All right, we're gonna open our meeting in the Millville Planning Board. It is Monday, October 2nd. We'll start with roll. Justin?
Here.
Pam?
Pam Williams here.
Jason?
Jason Miller here.
I am here. Preston is not here this evening, but we are joined by Dylan Lindholm, our junior town planner. We have on the list this evening is a public hearing for our warrant articles. So we can, should we open that now?
We sure can.
And then close it.
Motion to open our public hearing.
That's so moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Jason, aye.
Justin, aye.
Pam, aye.
I say aye. All right. So, how do we want to do this? Are we pulling them up or anything on a... Just going through them?
Yeah.
All right, we'll start with warrant article number one. Correcting major residential development definition in zoning bylaws. All right, so this particular one is to change, um, change the wording in one of the spots. Is that correct?
Yes. Yep, there's a definition called major residential development, um, which doesn't really clarify what that is. So if we define it better and say open space for residential development as defined in Article 7, that will clarify what we're talking about when we talk about a major residential development, instead of it just being arbitrary.
Right now, it's very broad, yeah. And we have no definitions to help guide us in terms of what that's supposed to mean. We're also, um, we're keeping it to say special permit, which is what it says. Oh, no, it says it's by right now or something, right?
Yes, which doesn't make sense because you do need a special permit for the open space developments. So it would make sense that you need a special permit for this.
All right. Warrant article number two. Expanding business uses in commercial districts and protecting residential districts from business uses. This was us taking a look at the chart of use that is currently in our bylaws and trying to, um, open up where it made sense, some of the opportunities that could be there by, uh, that were previously restricted by special permits in most cases, or not allowed.
Yep.
So specifically, we are looking to change retail store, craft, consumer, professional, or commercial service establishment dealing directly with the general public, restaurants or other establishments serving food and beverage, professional office or agency, bank or other financial institution, and insurance or real estate office. And we're changing that from being either not allowed or permitted to by right in our village center and commercial business districts only.
Question on that one?
Yes.
Should the restaurant or other establishment have it consumed on the premises versus in the building?
Yep, so, um...
Because didn't we change that someplace else?
Yep, that is the third warrant article. Maybe we should switch the warrant articles?
I mean, because here we're adding it with the other definitions.
Right now, I use...
Well, in here, that's how it's written currently. And then in the third one, we're changing it just to read the way it's supposed to.
Okay.
I use this language here because that's exactly what's on it right now.
That's what it's written.
So that's why I put it there first.
Oh, I see, possible text change.
Yeah, after we make those changes, then we're keeping, it's still a restaurant.
But they can have a balcony to eat on or whatever.
Yep, exactly.
That's why I put it in that order, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think this order makes sense because then otherwise, we're gonna have weird wording.
And you're saying, we mean this one, but it's, we want to change it to that, so.
Yep. All right, the other things that this article addresses is that undertaking establishment or funeral home would be allowed by special permit in the commercial business district. And that hotel and motel would no longer be allowed in village residential district. And that the following be added as the last item in Section C, any business and or retail use permitted above by right in excess of 10,000 square feet of building area. So, and this is again in our village center and commercial business districts. And this was to say that although we're allowing all of this stuff by right, if you're gonna come in here with some kind of like mega superstore, you're gonna have to come see the planning board first.
Which technically, right now, they don't need to.
Yeah. And the final piece of that warrant article is addressing Section E industrial. Any industrial use permitted above by right in excess of 10,000 square feet building area and allowed by special permit in the village center or commercial business districts would then need to come for a site plan review. Same thing here. We don't want any massive buildings being planned without having some sort of oversight.
I see a typo there, I'll fix it.
All right, and then the last one. Warrant article number three, clarifying residential uses in the zoning bylaw. This is where we're getting into some of those grammatical errors and those nuances. So there are four items that are gonna be addressed by this. Number one is that agriculture be changed to agricultural to be more grammatically correct. That in item B10, renting of one or two rooms and the furnishing of board by a resident family not to more than three non-transient persons, be changed to renting of one or two rooms and the furnishing of a board by a resident family not to more than three persons, taking lodging for more than 30 consecutive days at a time. And this was our, at least now, answer to things like Airbnb.
Airbnb, yeah. It's a Band-Aid, but it's useful.
That in C3, as you brought up a minute ago, restaurants or other establishments serving food and beverage to be consumed within the building to be changed to on the premises. And in D4, sale of motor vehicles incidental to the above be changed to sale of new or used motor vehicles. I think they're pretty self-explanatory here. I like that it was one more opportunity for us to kind of go through the language that's in the warrant article. We don't have anybody here this evening to ask us any questions. And I know we've been talking about this for...
A long time.
Four or five months at this point. So we've had a lot of opportunities to kind of hear from anybody who wanted to kind of weigh in on these particular changes. I, for one, I'm very excited that we've moved this forward yet again. This will be, you know, another opportunity for us to make some of the necessary changes and clarifying some of the language that's in our bylaws to make it more understandable, to make us more business-friendly, and to certainly protect us in some cases where the language is so broad that we are currently not. Any other thoughts or comments on...
I think you covered it well.
Three bylaws, all right. We can close this currently, then. We're not talking about it.
We don't need to vote on it or anything, right?
You can close the hearing and then vote to...
Recommend it.
Recommend, um, recommend it to the board of selectmen.
So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing regarding the three warrant articles.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. Is there a motion to make a recommendation of our three warrant articles to the board of selectmen?
I will make a motion to recommend the three articles as written to the board of selectmen.
Second?
I'll second it.
I think with that one grammatical change that you were making, um, all in favor?
Jason, aye.
Justin, aye.
Pam, aye.
Say aye.
I'm sorry, I missed the motion. I'm just writing a letter to the selectman.
Jason?
Jason.
And then Justin.
Justin, thank you.
Yep. And then at the select board meeting this evening, they have asked for planning board representation to talk through these warrant articles. I believe Dylan and Jason are gonna attend. All right, perfect. All right. The next item, um, oh, I didn't, I missed the minutes. Let's go back, hop around here for a minute.
Yeah, we don't have minutes from last time, I haven't finished them yet. Okay. Did you do the minutes from the 11?
Yes.
I think we did.
You did, okay. So I will have minutes for your next time. We'll have two next time.
Perfect. All right. Next on the list is to just start diving back in, I think, to some of the zoning bylaw review that we've been doing. So, um, I know at our last meeting, we briefly talked about some of this. We just wanted to take a moment to make sure we're all on the same page about the things that we wanted to kind of go after. And I think what really kind of came out of that was we do still have some definitions that need to be tackled, and some of those were in tandem with some other boards, or we wanted some advice from some other boards. And so our board thought that it would be good to plan for a meeting with zoning, once it gets established, with the building inspector, any conservation that brought up. You know, we can, we can kind of put something out there to all of the boards and come up with a plan for tackling some of those. And then continuing the work on the use chart that we had started this time around, what we did not get to was some of the additions and restructuring of that use chart that we wanted to do, but it was, we needed to kind of do this in pieces, and we wanted to make some changes more immediately. So that is something that we definitely want to move forward with as well.
Yeah, I can talk to those boards, the building commissioner, see what they want to do. Set up a joint meeting of some sort.
Yeah, however that works.
Yeah.
I think we can be pretty flexible.
Yeah.
All right. What you included in our packets this evening is just some of the snippets from the CMRPC.
This is a section from CMRPC. I, I don't have these, so these are printed out for last time, but...
Yep.
Obviously, the printers are black and white, so they don't have all my extra notes on them. I highlighted a few spots which are not highlighted now, like always. I just thought these pages were sort of a good section of noting things that we've done and noting things that we have yet to do. Yeah. So, this first section here, policy framework, village center overlay district, that's something that I think we'd have to really work with CMRPC on.
Yep.
Design guidelines. We were talking about economic development with CMRPC, and we also sort of, design guidelines could be something we develop, but Millville's so small that every project comes to you, you have a lot of time to look it over. You might not need design guidelines, but they're nice to have. It's just not a, it's not a requirement. Towns like them. Something we can look at in the future, but I don't think that's sort of like a, one of these like high priority, low hanging fruit things.
Agreed. Although it could be nice to jot down a few notes on that anyway.
Yeah, exactly, even if it's not a whole document.
Like in Mendon, they have, you know, if they put up a steel building, they like to have some stone cladding at the base. It kind of makes it look a little bit more, not so, you know, garage-like, so, stuff like that.
Yeah, and I think it got brought up before, maybe like the types of signs that we allow for might be something we'd want to take a look at.
Consistent with the character of the town.
Exactly, yeah. So we can talk to CMRPC about building a document like this, and I can always help with that, too. I think it's something we would want to put on the list, but maybe isn't something that's a high priority.
Yep.
Just an item. And then that third bullet point here is sort of, everything we do is trying to promote preferred uses. We've talked about the visual preference survey. Some of the things we do are gonna be helpful towards that. Other things, I think, would be part of design guidelines, so.
Yep. So, we're moving that forward with CMRPC.
Moving forward, yeah.
And hope to have that be a project that we're working on later.
Yeah. Definitely something more in the background for now, but will come up as we move forward.
Yep.
This part two here, use districts. Millville should assess how the current zoning districts actually carry out the vision for the community and the specific areas that they adhere to. I think one thing we've done so far is, in the warrant articles we're bringing this, this season, the hotels being in a residential district. So we're trying to remove that. Just as, like, deciding what fits in each of these districts and making the districts mean something. I think that's what they're looking for.
Which is good, because before, we had all these districts and everything was just the same everywhere.
Yeah. They do mention having a heavy commercial district versus, um, like industrial, separating those out. I don't, I don't know how important that is at this time, but it could be.
What's the difference between commercial and industrial?
Industrial would be...
A factory?
Factory. Machinery. Contractor yards. And commercial would be shops and restaurants.
Stores.
Stores.
Yeah.
Which comes under retail, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah. So we could separate those districts out more. Right now, they're sort of in one. We have the village center district and the, I think that's actually the most commercial that we have, is village center. But do we want to have an area of town that's, that's maybe away from residences or away from traffic, where someone could have a contractor's yard or a factory, you know, something like that? It's, it's a, it's a thought, that, I don't know. It depends on how Millville works as a town, how, how people drive through town or walk through town or use certain roads. Because once you designate certain roads for that, you might push out other things. Yeah. Something to think about, but I'm not sure how, how much I would recommend it, right now, at least.
Yeah.
It might be helpful to designate an area, but by designate an area, you put things in certain places. And people who live in that area might not be so happy about the fact that you're welcoming heavy machinery into one area of town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trying to think, where would a district fit?
I don't know.
I mean, 122 is really...
That's what I was trying to...
Yeah, and there's already sort of like...
Andes and...
122 is what we want to beautify too, as town center, at least.
I think north of Central Street, as far as that way, towards Uxbridge.
Yeah.
I mean, that's really the only, but there's some residential there.
Right. So, um, a lot of times, commercial districts or industrial districts that have a lot of residences in them, it's a, it's a long-term plan where you want to slowly push out the housing, and you want to start moving that, that neighborhood into a different sort of, um, you know, make it look very different from what it looks like now. And so you'll see districts that say they are heavy industrial, but there'll be a bunch of houses that were built in the 40s there. And it's because the plan is, next time that house sells, it's gonna sell to someone who wants to do a commercial business there, and they take down the house and they put in a big building.
So, people won't like that too much.
People don't like that, yeah.
No.
Yeah.
And I don't blame them.
It's a long-term plan for, you know, towns that have a big dream about keeping things separate. And it is very nice when that succeeds, you know, 50 years from now, you have a part of town that's dedicated to that instead of pockets, but...
In a town this size, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I don't know.
Uxbridge has the benefit of 146A, that whole area.
There are towns that have that, it's built in.
We're not so...
Not so much.
Not so lucky.
Not every town has to do that. We don't have to do that here.
Yep.
We can be a town that doesn't have that, that sort of business welcome as much as, you know, other businesses that we are trying to actively bring in. So, that's my opinion on it.
Would that be a reason to separate it out, then, is to say no to those things?
We don't need to have a different district. We would have uses, and they'd be listed, and we'd say no.
Okay.
But this would be if we wanted to make a district, which would be a little different, yeah. Let's see what else here. Mixed use is mentioned here, that's something we do want to talk about, yeah, in the future. And I think mixed use makes for a very vibrant center, town center.
And so that's one of the items that we're looking to add into our use chart when we make some...
Right now, we have something, it says mixed use with nothing else about it.
It's hard to find, yeah. So I think...
It'd be nice to clarify and narrow that down. You don't want any mixed use, you want very specific.
No, we want very specific mixed use. I wouldn't mind us prioritizing the pieces around that, you know, defining what that means to us and where we would like to see that, especially because it has come up, it's come up in the CMRPC reports, and, but we don't really have a way to pull it off.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that would be very helpful. I think a lot of our efforts lately, at least, have been trying to make the town center into something. So I think mixed use is a, is a big part of that. It would be very helpful, yeah. Let's see what else. And then we have density and design. This is about the amount of space you need for a lot, minimum lot size, setbacks, things like that. This is something I don't think we've talked about yet, really.
Not really.
The design guideline survey, I think, would probably have some information of what the town's looking for. Something we could definitely look at in the future, if you, if you guys want to look at this. I haven't looked at the, the answers to this, so what the, what the people in town are looking for. I would say I mostly see a lot of people who live in a town, who've lived in a town for a long time, want to see larger lots and single-family houses. And, um, that's not always the best system of growing a town. Yeah, or even anywhere in town, maybe outer, bigger.
Outside the bedroom community.
Sure. Yeah, yeah. So we just want to make sure that the square footage of each of these districts makes sense, and it's, it's enough that, A, the state is happy, B, the residents are happy. Or you can switch those two, make the residents happy first and the state happy second, but we don't have any, I think, I don't know how many units we have, but we are, we do not make our percentage of affordable housing at all. And that means...
There's the one that's on Hope Street, the 140B.
It means anyone could come in and, and apply for 40B and get it, no matter what. The town is no say.
What about Millville Heights? What is that considered? Because that's...
Not affordable.
It's right on West Street.
I don't know if we're past like 2% of the 10% we need.
Yeah, state's 10%.
Yeah. Yeah, so as much as people love large lots and single-family housing, you might need to have somewhere that's designated that, you know, you can allow for a two-family house, an affordable unit, in a, in a three-family house even. Two-family even, make one affordable, and it can help us.
Millville Heights, which is Millville and Uxbridge Housing.
Yeah.
But they're, um, they're like little townhouses, some of them are up and down, and there's quite a few in there.
Yeah.
And it would be something that would add a, the housing...
Yeah.
The, the, the 40B housing, and it looks, I mean, it kind of looks nice to me.
Yeah, that's good.
Center, not in the outskirts.
Yeah. Yeah, affordable housing doesn't have to be a complex. It doesn't have to be a big apartment tower. It can be one house. It can be a two-family house. It can be, you know, a small village of, of houses that are on their own. But it can be one, you know?
That's what these are.
Yeah. I think there's, there's this fear that if we try to look for, you know, building anything affordable, that it's gonna be a big apartment complex. You can just put one house in and call it affordable and put a deed restriction in, and that counts towards our percentage. So I just want to make sure that there are lot sizes that allow for someone to make their house affordable, put a deed restriction on it, or rent out a second unit in their house and make that affordable. Those little things are really, I think, good things to do.
Right.
Yeah. Instead of throwing people all in a apartment tower because they can't afford to not live in a, a big apartment. Yeah.
All right. So we could, we can take a look at that.
Yeah.
And that might be something, too, that we want to take a look at with the other, the other groups when we get them together.
Yep. And then this last section here is the, the phasing that they had here. High priority, low hanging fruit, talking about grammatical spelling errors that you've done. Contradictory provisions, elements that are illegal or use gap issues such as assigned bylaw, marijuana, certain definitions. So that's where we are still.
Yeah, we haven't finished that yet.
We're not done with that. But we've also done a little bit of, um, let's see. One of them, I thought we did sort of like head into one of the other phases, which is totally fine. But there's always something that might check off a few boxes here.
Yep.
So, um, to be honest, I think Phase 2 seems the most difficult to me. I, I would ask for CMRPC's help on that. Because redesigning the way the bylaws are, are...
It has to be something familiar with that.
You have to do it the right way.
Cold 360.
Exactly, there's a whole software that we pay to do that, and I would, I would want someone who's qualified in that to do that, yeah.
And then they can help explain it to everybody why that's happening.
Why, why it's, yeah.
I get why we need to do it, but like, moving things around, I think, might get folks nervous. So I think if they can provide some clarity with how that would be, that would be fantastic. What about some of the, the pieces that were, are missing?
Missing, um...
Like Phase 3, like some of these things, like talking about, um, alternative energy and things like that. Like, we don't have those things, so...
I think these are things that we can also be working on at the same time. I would just switch these and say Phase 1 and Phase 3 are the ones that we should be looking at.
Yes.
And move Phase 2 down.
I think that makes more sense to say Phase 2, so when we feel like we've kind of tackled some of these other things.
Yeah, then we can put it in a good place. I agree, I think we can probably work on, on some of these missing things, too. Maybe I can sort of, I'll go through and look at what, what sort of things are missing, and we can sort of look at what could be.
I talked about adult use as well.
Yeah, adult use is a big one.
Yeah, that's a big one.
Yeah. That I would want to bring in either CMRPC or the town council that we have as well, to make sure they, they're part of it.
Check everyone else's and see what they have.
Yeah. There are special lawyers, too. I don't know if our town council, maybe there's someone at their firm or something who focuses just on certain things like that, or like just marijuana law or just adult use law. So, we might want to look into that a little more detail.
Okay.
If you can do that. Okay. Adult use. Mixed use. Yeah. This gives me something to start working on and plan for after-town meeting, what our next priorities might be, and I'll get a few things together, and you guys can tell me what you like and what you don't like.
Yeah. I think one of the other things, just, I'm thinking through the last few years of items that have come up, and solar was another one that I think we needed to take a look at, because if I remember correctly, at one point, there was, there was a, somebody asking some questions about what was allowed and what wasn't allowed, and we realized that we didn't really have good bylaws on that section.
We have something on renewable energy. Right now, we have an overlay district, I think.
Yep.
But I'll tell you, there's, there's new technology out that's not included in most bylaws.
It's not mentioned in it, yeah.
Yeah, there's solar battery storage that, we should include that very soon because the state, basically, yeah, the state, the state is telling towns like, you're not allowed to deny these people.
Yeah.
So, we kind of need to make sure it's written in, and we have a place for them, yeah.
Agreed. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, just wanted to think of that. And then I know that back still in the high priority, low hanging fruit section, one of the things that I would love to take a look at, and it's, it's so small and it, it doesn't, doesn't probably get into the nitty-gritty, but it's that word permitted that's everywhere, and how it's really troublesome to understand if it means that it's allowed.
Allowed.
Yeah. And even if we could just identify, yeah. Where does that live? Like, where are those areas, and which ones could be issues that cause us trouble?
Permissible versus permitted, yeah.
Exactly.
Permitted or permitted.
I would love just to tackle that and make a list of all of that.
Definitely.
I remember that being... I remember that being a big one in the sign bylaw.
Sign bylaw's another big thing.
Yeah, and I know that one in general needs to be tackled, but even if we just go through and we say the following uses of permitted need to be changed to permissible, or, yeah.
With permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At least that gives us that, that piece towards enforcement that I don't believe we, we have right now, so.
Yep. That's great.
All right. Any other items on, on our priority list that we want to discuss tonight?
That's everything. Just stand by on 181 Main Street still. Working on it, but it's going to be a little slow-going in the beginning. I think what we'd want to do is make, I think Jack called it a master plan, not, not a town master plan, but a master plan about what we want to do with this one parcel.
Okay.
So I'm going to work with Peter on that and get started, and then I'll bring it to you guys again.
Awesome. And that's the What point does the planning department, because we would have to put in for the money at first for the, just the survey to know where
Yeah.
That entrance is?
Yeah, so this would be kind of like writing a business plan.
Okay.
And then that, you know, what, what's written is used to then go for some money.
Okay.
So if we have a big idea, and we write it all down and say, here's our big idea, here's why we think it's going to work, here's how much we think it's going to cost, we can use that to then get funding.
To go try to find the funding.
Yeah.
And the funding on the Brownsfield's two, Phase Two?
I don't think we need it.
No?
Not yet, at least. They didn't seem to find anything. They didn't find any pollution.
I read it over, but they did say that they needed to physically check what they found.
There's no way for them to check yet, though, because the whole thing is
It's just plant.
Yeah, it's all plant.
It's overgrown.
So if they do need to go further, then we can definitely do that, but it'll definitely be after the whole thing is raised to the ground, you know? We have a flat piece of land that we can look at, you know? There's nothing they can do until we know more about what's there. Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, that's exciting.
Yeah.
We have a lot on our plate in the next month.
I also wanted to mention, next meeting, we have an A and R coming.
Okay.
So that'll be good.
When is that?
That is October 23rd. I'll make sure I'm right on that.
So three weeks?
Yeah, three weeks. We have a holiday next week, and then our next normal meeting would, would have been the ninth, so the 23rd is our next one.
Do you know the address on the A and R?
I do. I'm waiting for them to send me an electronic copy, so I'll send it as soon as I can, but 226 Main Street. They're looking to split one parcel into two. We also have an incoming subdivision application for Killarney Woods. We spoke with the owner and their lawyer months and months ago.
Isn't that for two lots?
Yeah.
Killarney was two lots, yeah.
It was one property that they wanted to
Was it just an 81
Yes, because there's not enough frontage, so
They want to put a road in.
Put a road in to do it.
It just, the terminology threw me off there, like it was more than two units.